Hold on, hold on.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission. I would like first for Mr. Pruder to explain how the virtual meeting will work and how the public can make comments. Mr. Pruder?
Good evening Chair Doran, other planning commissioners and members of the public. Thank you very much this evening. Regarding the procedures of communicating for this meeting, as it is a virtual meeting, the commissioners are going to be requested to have their webcams on during the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item for tonight's agenda, we ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying any presentations during your item. We then kindly would ask you to turn off your webcam and microphone when you are done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on the screen interface for Zoom, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone, giving you the ability to speak and provide public comment. Alternatively, for those calling in by phone for tonight's meeting, you can press star nine on your keypad for your phone to notify staff that you have a comment and it'll be similar to raising one's hand in Zoom. And also for any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter, as in more than one commenter using the same line to potentially communicate public comment, please inform staff at the start of your public comment that you would have someone else that would be following you to also provide comment and staff will ensure that the other commenter will be able to speak once you've finished your comment. With that said, I hand it back over to you Chair Doran. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. I'd like to call the roll, make sure we have a quorum. Commissioner Barnes? Let's see you.
President.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty?
Good evening.
Commissioner Harris?
Hello, good evening.
Commissioner Kennedy? And I know I heard you before, so I think you might. Commissioner Riggs?
Present.
And myself. We have Commissioner Tate absent tonight, but we do have a quorum of six members. I'd like to see if Ms. Sandmeyer has any reports and announcements for us.
Yes, good evening Chair Doran and Commissioners. My only announcement is that the independent redistricting commission recruitment was extended to October 29th. Originally, that would have ended October 15th. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from Ms. Sandmeyer? Doesn't look like it. Okay, I'd like to move on to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent counter. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I'd like to just remind people, if you have a comment about a specific item that is on the agenda, there will be an opportunity to speak on that item later on our agenda. This is for general comments not on the agenda. And if you haven't already done so and you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand, use the button on your screen to raise your hand. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised now?
Thank you Chair Doran. At this time I see no hands. I'm happy to wait a moment longer. Again, you can raise your hand and if you're calling by phone, press star nine and happy to wait a moment.
Yeah, let's give people an opportunity to raise their hands. Do we have any hands raised now?
I still see no hands raised at this time Chair Doran, so I leave it to you if you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, I'll close the general public comment at this time and return to our agenda. Under the consent calendar, we have the approval of minutes and court reporter transcript from the August 23rd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. That's the only thing under the consent counter. Would anyone like to remove those items from the consent counter to make comments on the minutes? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of corrections.
Okay. Let's remove those to the consent calendar and please make your corrections.
I apologize. Give me one moment. So the first item. The first item is that on the transcript, page 27, line 18, the phrase is not assisted. It should be not as if it. And then on the following page, line 15, there is a phrase to a ray of solar panels and that should be to an array of solar panels. I have shared those two corrections with staff and Ms. Sandmeyer asked that I read them into the record tonight.
As always, for your attention to detail, would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment. There was two changes.
We have a second. Commissioner Harris, seconds. So I'll call the roll for this. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
DeCarty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Riggs?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the minutes are approved, six to zero with one at one commissioner absent. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for a use permit from Melissa McJanet at 654 Hermosa Way. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing two-story residence and detached garage and construct a new two-story residence with a basement and an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the RE Residential Estate zoning district. The proposal also includes a new detached accessory dwelling, dwelling unit, ADU, which is a permitted use. We have a staff report on this from Ms. Khan. Ms. Khan, do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Yes, good evening Commissioners, members of the public and staff. Staff has an update to the project. I apologize for the incorrect property owner name that was noticed out. The actual property owner name should be William Young, which is stated in the staff report. The incorrect property owner's name had gone out. The that was the former property owner's name, which was Melissa McJanet. The new property owner is William Young. The staff report and analysis is based on the new owner's name. Also to note, staff has received multiple neighbor correspondence during the review of the project and after staff report publication. Correspondence is received after staff report publication has been emailed to the planning commissioners and has been attached online to the agenda. Those are, and also to summarize the concerns that were received via neighbor email, those are for in regards to the privacy from the left and right neighbors due to the construction of the two new two-story house, the close proximity of the proposed ADU, the size of the proposed residence and the tree that has been removed from the front yard. Those were the main items of concern that were summarized from the correspondences that we received after staff report publication. That concludes my updates for this project.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Commissioner Riggs, your hand is still raised. I don't know if that's from the minutes or if you have a further cause for it. Thank you. Does anyone have, anyone on the commission have clarifying questions from Ms. Khan on the staff report? Commissioner DeCarty?
Hi, Ms. Khan. I just wanted to confirm from the staff report, if this property were 20 inches wider, would we be having this hearing this evening?
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Riggs, your hand is raised once again.
Yes, I also have a clarifying question reflecting some comments in the, from the neighbors. Was there a through the chair, if I could ask, was there a report of trees being removed prior to the application?
If I may answer Commissioner Riggs's question, the applicant has submitted HTR heritage tree removal permits through the city and has received an approval for the removal of the cedar cedar that was in the front property or the front yard. And the removal was due to its health, which does not require public noticing.
I see. And were any other trees removed besides the cedar?
I believe not. I believe only the cedar has been removed and the others have been proposed to be removed when the appeal for those has just ended a few weeks ago, so they have not been removed from the property.
All right, and then just to clarify, you noted that when a tree is removed because of a health condition, it is not noticed to the neighbors?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. If you could remember, oh yeah, you turned off your hand. To all the commissioners, if you are done with your comments, please remember to turn off your virtual hand. Does anyone else have clarifying questions from this con? Okay, in that case, I will ask for the presentation by the applicant on behalf of the applicant, after which we will open up public comments on this agenda.
Hello, I'm Mark Godby and I began designing this project for the previous owner, Melissa McJanet, back in July of 2020. And she was a very good client and worked very hard with us to make it a really nice home. And also she worked very closely with us and closely with the neighbors as well and, and really tried to make it something that would warm the neighborhood and conceded many things along the way. But we lost her in May of 2021 in that she decided to, after that amount of time, to sell the property to the current owner, who is our current client, William Young. And William along the way was closely involved in the project as well because he was slated to be the builder of the project all along the way. So he's very familiar with all that went on and how the project evolved and so back in the beginning of the project, the cedar tree, which was in the front left corner of the property, was in, in decline as was an olive tree that was nearby in the front left area of the property. And over the course of the year, those trees further declined and we had two arborists look at them and also I'm sure the town arborist looked at them and they all agreed that for health reasons that they were approved to be removed. So and then that was back June 25th, when those were removed and later on, a separate permit was received to remove a camphor tree on the right side of the property. And on August 30th, that tree was approved to be removed. And while the arborist considered it to be in poor to fair condition with some exposed roots and some dead wood up in the crown as well, it was said to be removed for development reasons. So with an appeal period, that tree is now approved for removal. And the only other trees that were removed on the side, I think too, I'm thinking of were small trees, not heritage trees. So basically everything that's been done has been done with an, with a permit and with arborist approvals. So, and then so subsequent to that, there will be replacement and there is a screening plan. So the neighbor on the right, on the other side of the camphor tree that was there, we came up with a plan along the way before the property was sold to plant, per our landscape architect at the time, Tom Cloke, to plant six fern pine trees to provide screening to replace the screening that was provided by that camphor. And also back then, we agreed to, and amended the plans to make the windows smaller. Two of the windows on the right front bedroom became 33% narrower and also we got all of the sills to be more than three feet above the finished floor at all the bedrooms on both sides of the house, actually. So on, on the other side, there's been some recent commentary about an oak tree that's on the neighbor's property and the proximity of part of our ADU, which will be built very close to grade with a tree sensitive slab and a single pier that's in the encroachment area of the tree. So the encroachment area has been determined by our arborist, John McLennigan, to be less than 15% of the root environment area. And what we feel about that tree is we've tried to be very sensitive to it also by using stitch piers to minimize the cut near the main house. And so we're making efforts to preserve it. But what I would say to that is, I think we're best relying on the arborists, the professional consulting arborist and the town arborist along the way with arborist inspections and tree preservation guidelines and, and something that may comfort the neighbor on the left side Sherman is that our arborist is their arborist. I believe our arborist has been their arborist for years. So we, we hope that there's some comfort in that. As for the home itself, much of the design that evolved during the Melissa and McJanet ownership is still intact, in fact, almost entirely intact. One of the benefits of working with the neighbors on this is over time, we took several additional passes at the design. And I feel very confidently that the design improved for it. And so beyond that, from the beginning, we tried to create a house that stepped back to its upper floor, was softened by the front wraparound porch. And we feel that we're, we're doing a nice job of creating a home that doesn't approach the daylight planes or the height limit. And also the rear one-story wings add to some privacy by isolating the rear yard entertainment area to the middle, which is flanked by the wings and creates neighbor privacy towards both sides. Also, another thing is several large homes have been built recently. So I understand fully why the neighborhood is concerned. But when I drive down the street and I look at some of those homes that are under construction, they're very forward on the lots, very, it seems near the front setback lines. They're very vertical. And there, some of them are even really tight up against some of the trees. And I feel that this home is different. Our front setback is 30 feet, two inches, and that's to the front edge of a column on the front porch, not to the front of the building itself. And but I feel like with the extra setback and the softening of the lower roofs and stepping back of the upper walls that we've got a much softer home that I think will be much more better received when it's finished. So in a way, it's a kind of a model of how I was taught to create a home that in spite of being large in scale is sensitive. So in the project description, all of the things that we did to the home to work with the neighbors on the home itself, like we lowered the overall height of the building by over a foot. So now the height is just 28 foot five, well below the 30 foot high limit. And we got all the light wells within the setbacks now. And we mitigated some of the noise sources by choosing some of the quietest equipment out there for heat pumps. And then we also provided enclosures for much of the equipment. Now the pool equipment's in a full enclosure with roof. And the heat pumps are in fenced enclosures and also they're quite far from the property line because they're on the 20-foot setback side of the home, not, not the other side. So we reduced the ADU size, excuse me, a little bit. And also made the window sills all at least three feet above the upper floor. And like I said before, reduced window side. So all of these changes are still intact. And it's nice that this new owner was along for the ride and is preserving much of what was done over the course of the last year with the previous owner. And beyond that, I have to thank Fatine for all the work she's done on this over time. And I am in full agreement with the staff report. I think it was very fairly done and thank you.
Thank you. Do we have clarifying questions from the commission at this time? We will have another opportunity, of course, to comment after public comments. If anyone has clarifying questions for the applicant now, now's the time. Okay, I don't see any. Before I open the public comment, I would like to disclose that I did a site visit with one of the neighbors, Beth Benjamin, who also wrote to the commission this evening. I don't think that will affect my ability to be impartial on the application. Mr. Pruder, I would like to open it to public comment now. Do we have any hands raised at this time?
Thank you Chair Doran. At this time, I'm not seeing any, but as a reminder to members of the public, if you're interested in publicly commenting for this particular project, this item, you're welcome to do so by raising your hand with the hand icon on the Zoom interface. Or if you're calling by phone, please press star nine. And again, from any members of the public who are sharing their accounts or their phone number this evening and wish to have their friend or colleague speak after them, to please let us know when you're speaking publicly that you'd have someone following you to make sure that we have both commenters given the appropriate amount of time for public comment. I still see no hands. I'm happy to wait a moment more if you prefer.
Yeah, we had a number of emails, including some that came in fairly late, so I think we may have some public comment on this application. Are there any hands raised now?
I still see no hands raised or other icons indicating desire to speak, members of the public. And so if you'd like, you may close it at this time.
Yeah, I will close public comment this time and bring it back to the commission for further comment questions. I actually have a question for staff. One of the issues or questions raised in the, in the email sent to the commission was that the question believed that the commission had the ability to acquire the ADU to be set back further from the property line in order to preserve the health of a tree on the neighboring property. I'd like to ask Ms. Khan or whoever else might be appropriate for that on the C staff. Whether we do in fact have that power, as I understand the state mandated that we could not restrict ADUs if they were at least four feet from the property line. Could you comment on that, Ms. Khan?
Yes, so I believe that the commission may not change the location, given that it is meeting the four feet setback requirement. And also the arborist has taken into consideration and also the architect has taken into consideration the construction of the ADU itself in order to preserve the neighboring tree. I don't think that relocating the ADU is something that could be done, but I would definitely defer to Acting Principal Planner Karina Sandmeyer to add in any information.
Yes, so just as a follow-up, Ms. Khan is correct. The ADU is not part of the use permit application. So since it's not subject to that application, it wouldn't, it's not something that the commission can condition.
Thank you. Do we have other questions or comments from the commission this time? Commissioner Kennedy?
I move that we approve this project as is.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. I I did find this to be a handsome home and I also do want to acknowledge Mr. DeCarty's observation that this is very nearly a conforming lot as it is. It is certainly a big home, but I wanted to give some credit, at least from my vantage point for the proportions and the materials fitting into a context of older, smaller homes. I would like to just ask if, through the chair, if the applicant has considered the maturing of the podocarpus row. The podocarpus species chosen can be very columnar, but is not always columnar. And they grow to be quite large. It would appear that the result is going to be a 30-foot-high, eight to 10-foot-deep hedge. And is this actually what the, what the applicant wants to see 10 years down the road? I wanted to just prompt whether that has been considered.
Do you like me to comment, Mark?
Please.
Okay, well, I defer to the landscape architects on that one for the species selection. One thing that did occur is that we were asked to space them further apart by the town arborist at the time. So that when they were mature, that they would have the proper spacing to thrive. And so we did space them further apart as on the site plan that you have now. 15 feet on center is what we were asked to do there. So we are certainly open to other solutions. But this is the best one I have at the moment.
All right, well, I'm certainly not going to be the one to name the solution. I think as long as you have it in your minds, you might get a chance to look at mature trees at 15-foot-on-center and may well work out. So just wanted to make sure it had been considered. And with that, I would like to second the motion for approval.
Okay, um, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak before we move to a vote? Okay, Commissioner Riggs, could you please remember to turn off your hand icon?
Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The application is approved, six, zero with one member absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a use permit from Jenny and Chris Button at 1750 Bay Laurel Drive. This is a request for a use permit for excavation within the required right side, side and rear setbacks for two basement light wells associated with a new two-story residence with a basement and attached accessory dwelling. with a basement and attached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, a standard lot in the R one S, single-family suburban residential zoning district. We have a staff report on this from Mr. Chan. Mr. Chan, did you have anything to add to the staff report this time?
Good evening, Chair Doran and members of the commission and members of the public. I have nothing further to add. I'd like to note that from the applicant team, there is Lauren Goldman and Megan Jones here that are joining us as well as the property owners Jenny and Chris Puddin. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any clarifying questions for Mr. Chan? Okay, I don't see any, so I would like to now call for a public comment on this agenda item. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised from the public at this time?
If I may, Chair Doran, I wasn't sure if the applicant team wanted to present or speak, have any remarks prior to public comment. I apologize.
Thank you. You're absolutely correct. We should go to the applicant's presentation first. So who do we have on behalf of the applicant? Okay, Ms. Goldman, would you like to speak?
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. So we just wanted to just build upon the detailed report that Calvin has produced. And really, just our project is requesting a use permit specifically for the excavation of the right side and right year, right yard, rear yard setbacks for two basement light wells. And this is associated with a new two-story residence with basement attached. And partly, really, the main reason that this has caused the request for the use permit is there's a large oak tree in the rear corner of the property that has been part of sort of the whole design intent to maintain the health of this tree and avoid it. The owners have lived in their current home for the past fourteen years, love the property and the neighborhood, and really, the intention to build this new home is to make it their forever home as their home, as their family's grown. But to stay in the neighborhood and stay at their property. But the intention really was to preserve this tree. So in truth, even though it's a brand new two-story home, the footprint of the new home is virtually on the same exact footprint of the existing home. And we really want to minimize again that impact to the trees. So that's why those light wells are positioned furthest from the tree. But unfortunately, that's pushed the home to one side of the lot, which has then forced this need to to apply for a use permit because those light wells do cross into the setbacks. But we've also just want to note that the new residence, as well as the attached ADU, all follow the zoning guidelines and don't don't require any special use permits for those. So those all fall within the zoning guidelines. And we've worked closely with the project arborist along the way and familiar with, you know, the tree and how we're protecting that. And we'll continue to do that to make sure there's no impact during construction. And then just lastly, our, our, the homeowners have been in touch with all their neighbors through the process and have received positive feedback on, especially on this variance or the need for the use permit for the light wells. That's it.
Thanks. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commissioners? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So this time I will open it up to a public comment. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised?
Any again, Chair Doran, we do not at this time, but as a reminder to the public, if you would like to provide a public comment, you may do so by raising your hand, clicking the hand icon on your interface for Zoom. And if you are calling by phone, to press star nine. And if anyone is sharing an account or sharing a phone call and would have more than one commenter on that line, to please inform us at the start of your public comment. I'm not seeing anyone. We can wait a moment more if you'd like or proceed.
Yeah, I would like to give it a minute. Still no hands raised?
I'm still seeing no hands raised, so you're welcome to proceed if you'd like.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Do we have any questions or comments any commissioners would like to speak on this application? No one wants to speak? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the project as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, actually, I do have. I do have a question through the chair to the, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, Ms. Goldman, if you're the designer in this case.
Yes, the architect.
Right. And and that does have to do with the light wells. On the previous project, there was a question of with a large house on a significantly large lot, wasn't it possible to get the entire construction within the setback? And not really a need to come forward to ask for light wells as it might be on a narrower lot or a smaller lot. Certainly, this house doesn't lack for square footage. Did you all consider simply building within your setback lines?
Um, yeah, I think that really as the design unfolded, as I mentioned, it really, it really was impacted by the trees and we did some exploratory trenching along the way to have the arborist explore that as well. And we just wanted to make sure that we were not impacting the tree. And so in order to squeeze the program and also we wanted to include an ADU as well in the programming. And so that really really started to eat up that space. And then, of course, the front setback with the garage included and so forth. We just, we were, believe it or not, squeezed that way that those light wells for the basement. You know, if we included them in those setback, you know, out of the setbacks, we would have really started to be imposing upon that tree.
All right, although certainly the ADU could have been positioned in other places. It's sort of the one independent form that could be moved about. And so I, I think that's the only question I had. I was interested in the background. I would like to note again, we, I think the the town is blessed to have two handsome homes presented tonight. Not everyone looks forward to particularly large homes. And this one certainly presents itself as large since it is pretty much as wide as one could fit on a lot. But I think the design nonetheless makes this quite an attractive overall project. I do feel it's worthy in this case, and this would not affect my vote of support on this project. But I do think it's worth the planning commission taking a look at the ADU in this case where I think the city council and and then the state taking the lead instead had a particular idea of what an ADU would do and what it would serve. In this case, the orientation of the ADU and its connection to the main house does make it appear that the primary purpose of the ADU is actually to increase the square footage of an already large house, which, you know, has been done legally here. But I think it's worth noting that the ADU law is is there for as an opportunity for a developer or builder or an investing homeowner. And it might be worth discussion at some point in the future. So with that aside, I would again like to second the motion of my fellow commissioner to approve the project as presented in the staff report.
Okay, before we move to a vote, I would like to see if anyone else would like to speak in this application. Looks like no one does, so I will go to the vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Riggs, please remember to turn off your hand icon. I will also vote yes. So the application is approved six zero with one commissioner absent. The next item on our agenda
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Go forth and build. The next item on the agenda was requested to be continued to a future meeting, the November first meeting. But I'm told by Ms. Sandmeyer that it still requires a vote of the commission in order to continue it. So I'm going to read the agenda item into the record and then call for a motion to approve. Item F three on the agenda is a general plan amendment and rezoning in the city of Menlo Park at one oh five one fifty five Constitution Drive and thirteen ninety five Chrysler Drive. This is a request for a general plan amendment to change, to change the land use designation of an approximately thirty-six hundred square foot portion of an existing approximately eight point nine acre parcel from commercial business park to public quasi-public and to change the land use designation of an approximately thirty-six hundred square foot portion of an existing approximately five thousand square foot parcel from public quasi-public to commercial business park. In addition, the area with the resulting public quasi-public land use would be rezoned to the PF Public Facilities District. And the area with resulting commercial business park land use would be rezoned M three X, Commercial Business Park Conditional Development District. The requested entitlements are associated with a lot line adjustment to construct a new city-owned pump station at thirteen ninety five Chrysler Drive. Would someone care to make a motion to continue to the November first meeting, Commissioner DeCarty?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Harris? Call the roll, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
A vote in favor, so the motion passes six zero with one absent. Moving along, the next item on the agenda. F four is a development agreement annual review for Cyrus Sanandaji, excuse me if I mispronounced your name, the City of Bay Ventures, thirteen hundred square, thirteen hundred El Camino Real and five fifty Oak Grove Avenue. This is an annual review of the property owner's good faith compliance with the terms of the development agreement with the thirteen hundred El Camino Real project. We do have a staff report on this, and I believe it's by Ms. Sandmeyer. Sandmeyer, do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Um, no, staff has no updates. Thank you.
Do we have any?
My, Corinne, am I, sorry, Michael, through the, through the chair to staff? Am I recused from this as well as the next one or just the next one?
Just the next one.
Okay, terrific.
Do we have any other clarifying questions at this time? Okay, it looks like we don't. It's like we have the applicant here or representative, the applicant. Do you have a presentation for us?
I do, and good evening, commissioners, and thank you, Chair Doran. I apologize. There we go. We wanted to keep this presentation brief to be respectful of everyone's time. We know the agenda is is full here. But keeping it consistent with the presentation that we provided last year, just wanted to provide a short update as to the status of the project and to hopefully spell out what we anticipate to be the last remaining steps to completion and then hopefully the successful occupancy and activation of the overall project as well. Construction has proceeded diligently since our previous report and full compliance with the county and city health requirements, as the commissions are aware. The project was shut down at the beginning of COVID last year, and our team did take over the project right at that time. Since then, we've continued to progress with the work. We received our conditional TCO for the South Office Building in late August and anticipate receiving the TCO for the North Office Building, hopefully within the next few weeks. The residential building has also made substantial progress and we're anticipating, we were anticipating our TCO at the end of this year. Though what I'll address in terms of the forthcoming project modifications is having an impact on the delivery date of the residential building. The dog park has also been completed and for those who've had the opportunity to visit the site, it's ready to be used by the public as soon as the rules and regulations are finalized. But the dog park agreement with the city has been recorded. And now the central plaza and fountain area is also open to to the public. We've provided the compliance matrix that was submitted along with our letter. And as you can see, the project is in full compliance with the development agreement obligations. And as a result, we respectfully request that staff recommend that the planning commission determine that the project is complying good faith with the terms of the DA for purposes of this year's annual review. I'm happy to jump into some further detail that I do want to be cognizant of the commission's time with respect to the project update, Chair Doran. If you feel it would be helpful, I'm happy to provide some more details with regards to the current status or can otherwise jump into the project modifications. I think you may be on mute.
What I'd like to do is just ask for clarifying questions from the commission at this time. And then if they wish, if the commission wishes to explore other topics, we can do that after we've had public comments. You can explore as far as as they wish. So do we have any clarifying questions on the presentation from the applicant or from the developer this time? I can't see everyone on the commission at once, so make sure you raise your hand digitally if you if you have a question. Okay. I'm not seeing any questions. Mr. Sanandaji, I'd like to open it up for public comment this time. And then we will return to the commission for further questions and comments. So, Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised from the public?
Hello again, Chair Doran. I do not see any hands raised at this time, but as a reminder to the members of the public, if you'd like to speak, please press the hand icon to raise your hand on the Zoom interface. And we can give you the ability to speak and provide public comments alternatively by phone. You can press star nine. And if anyone is sharing their line by Zoom or by phone, to please indicate that they have another commenter on the same line so that we would ensure that both commenters or other commentators will be able to speak as well, provide their comment. I'm happy to wait a moment before we proceed with closing public comment. I see no hands at this time.
Thank you. I would like to give it a moment, and I'll take advantage of that moment to disclose for the record that I did meet with Mr. Sanandaji and tour the property. But I don't think that it but I don't think that it will affect my ability to be impartial on, on this matter. So let's just give it a little bit more time to see if we have any other questions.
And Chair Doran, as we wait, I may have confused the, the question too, there was one other part of the, of the presentation as it relates to the, the annual update, but it had to do with the project modifications that we're currently seeking, and so I did want to share a little bit of that as a preview with the commission, if you grant me a few minutes to do so.
Okay, I think we can, let's return to the applicant, I'm going to close public comments for the moment. Unless Ms. Sandmeyer tells me I can't do this, I will give the public another chance to comment when Mr. Sanandaji is done. I'm not hearing any objections, let's return it to the applicant.
Thank you for that, Chair Doran. So when our team took over the project about a year and a half ago, we really took a step back and tried to evaluate what was being built at, at the time that had been paused due to the shelter in place orders, and there was a series of operational and functional challenges that the approved design posed throughout the overall project that affected the residential buildings, the two commercial buildings and in our view would have, had they been left unaddressed, resulted in the project struggling to attract tenants both at the retail sort of community serving elements that, that were originally contemplated as part of the approvals and also for the office buildings. We also think that the design had prejudiced access to the residential building as well. And so we wanted to summarize the, the, the series of project modifications that we then subsequently engaged with a planning staff and the, the city team more broadly and have been working with planning and the broader city community and city team for at least fifteen months or so at this point to try to bring forth these project modifications and receive all the series of approvals that are required to be able to implement these changes. And just for the benefit of the planning commissioners this evening, I just wanted to provide a brief summary of what these changes were and are, as, as we hope to be able to come back to the commission with a formal approval, but the access itself to the residential building that was at the corner of Oak Grove and Garwood had always contemplated a fountain, the fountain however, was not designed in a way that would have provided primary access to the building, primary ADA access to the building to the entrance of the residences. There was a side entrance that would have led to an elevator that really from our view wasn't in the spirit of ADA, and so we've proposed changes to the stair design and substituted certain stairs for ramps to create a more gradual grade and slope change to, to provide for full ADA access into the primary residential lobby. The anticipation originally was to have community serving retailer uses all along El Camino and a decent portion of, of Oak Grove as well. However, there was no consideration from a physical standpoint to how those spaces would be serviced. And so how a restaurateur, cafe, or other types of uses could actually occupy those retail spaces. Everything from trash rooms to being able to stage trash in the basement levels and take them out later to the trash enclosure that's at grade at the back at Garwood and other similar types of back of house functions that, that were otherwise not in place and would have required significant compromise from our perspective again to the public areas that, that are really meant to be the broader community benefit in terms of the plaza and other outdoor spaces that are meant to hopefully enhance and create a sense of place that's publicly accessible for everyone in the community to use the project. Other issues related to, to these back of house or operational challenges included USPS notifying us that they wouldn't deliver mail to the ground floor of any of these buildings, that they wanted a consolidated lobby area in the basement level to deliver the mail because vehicle access to the grade level at El Camino, Garwood and, and Oak Grove was, was restricted. There's no loading or otherwise parking accommodation on El Camino anywhere along those frontages. And the fact that the, the overall parking level is so big, we in consideration of having to accommodate USPS and other deliveries and to avoid traffic congestion, we wanted to create a sense of secure access to each of these basement level lobbies beneath each of the buildings, and so that's necessitated creating lobby vestibules or intervestebles to the elevators that are otherwise just discharging into a large public, open parking space or parking garage. A couple of other structural, more technical issues. The fact was that the buildings hadn't been designed or thought through as beyond sort of the core and shell, and so in response to the pandemic, we had introduced and, and tried to respond to the fact that we don't believe that individuals, tenants, occupants, visitors would want to use these buildings and primarily congregate in elevators, and so wanted to encourage, given the low right nature of these buildings, to use pedestrian circulation vertically within the building, and so we, we actually cut in new sort of oversized stairs to encourage the use of sort of that pedestrian connectivity within the building. The, the south building, we could only go to the plaza level, but in the north building, we were able to go all the way down to B two such that your vehi, you know, you would drive your vehicle into the garage and you'd be able to then walk up through a secured lobby into your, your office floor. However, once the core was put into the building, to the buildings, both office buildings and in consideration of the way that the structural bracing design had worked, the second floor of both the north and south building are severely limited such that we can't actually access the floor physically, given the placement of the brace frame that's in place and the atrium that's been cut on the second floor that was originally designed, and it's just an open atrium that looks down on the ground floor lobby. And then other, two other minor modifications that we're pursuing, which were always contemplated, but given where we are in the project are being bundled into this broader category of changes or modifications has to do with the related outdoor seating and alcohol use for the restaurants who we're in negotiations with at the moment that we're very excited to be able to announce and bring to Menlo Park and the associated areas for, for outdoor seating that the, the project has and had always contemplated in the plaza area and then also along Oak Grove and at the fountain that hopefully will serve as a congregating point, a, a point that's sort of bright and light and active and secure at all times of the, of the day and night for folks in the community who may be using the Menlo Park Caltrain Station to commute and, and come and go to work. And then finally, there was a administrative issue that we learned about as we were getting our final TCO sign off for the south building, but despite the generator being approved, the generator building being approved and having gone through a series of permits and approvals with fire, with barrier, quality management and so on. It, it appears a diesel use permit hadn't been contemplated, which has posed a bit of a challenges, even our TCO is now conditioned. We have to go back and, and secure this use permit for the, for the diesel itself, for the generator that's already installed for the entire life safety system that, that's in place and that is dependent on this backup power.
Thank you, I do want to clarify for the commission that none of the matters that you're talking about now are on the agenda for tonight. So if they require approvals from the commission, they'll return to the commission at some future date. For this evening, we're asked to make a finding regarding SEQA and a finding that Bay Presidio Bay Ventures is in compliance with the development agreement. Those are the only things on the agenda for this evening. Did anyone on the commission want to ask a clarifying question to Mr. Sanandaji at this time? Okay, I'm going to make another attempt, oh, sorry, Mr. Commissioner Barnes?
I'm sorry, Chair Doran, you made a reference to SEQA, what?
So if you look in the staff report, it's attachment A on page six. So they're asking for two actions, one is to make a finding that the annual review of the development agreement has no potential to result in an impact to the environment and does not meet the definition of a project under the California Environmental Quality Act. So that's one finding we're being asked to make. The second finding is to make a finding that Presidio Bay Ventures is in compliance with the provisions of the approved development agreement, the period of October twenty to twenty twenty through October twenty twenty one. Those, those are matters that are actually on the agenda for tonight. If there are no more clarifying questions, I'm going to make another attempt at public comment. Mr. Pruder, do we have any hands raised now?
Again, Chair Doran, I do not see any hands raised, I'd earlier announced the protocols, so if you'd like, we can wait a little longer or we can proceed by closing public comment period.
I think I'm going to give him just a few moments.
Sure thing.
Okay, if there's no hands raised, I do want to close public comment now.
No hands raised, so.
Okay, thank you, public comment is closed, we'll bring it back to the dais if we have further questions or comments on these two matters that are actually, the two matters that are for the commission tonight. Now is the time. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, I do have a question. I guess I never noticed it before, have we always, as it relates to doing our review of the DA's, had this also finding that it doesn't result in a project on the SEQA, has that been the case with all of our DA annual approvals, whether it's by hand speech or Facebook piece or whatever? Has that always been in, yeah, I'll look through you, the chair of the staff, just a confirmation.
Yeah, Ms. Sandmeyer, would you care to respond to that?
Yeah, I believe that has been included. So, but a motion could just be made to to find the project in conformance per the staff report, I think that would cover everything.
Thank you.
We have other commissioners that would like to speak. Not seeing any other hands raised, would anyone like to make a motion at this time? I think I would like to ask Commissioner Barnes if he is comfortable with the motion to make both of the findings in the staff report. Or if, as Ms. Sandmeyer suggested, you prefer to only make the finding that the applicant's in, in compliance with the development agreement.
Thank you for that, no, mine was, my question was largely procedural, I mean, shame on me, I never, I never realized that it ran the potentiality of being defined as a project, so mine was more of a curious curiosity, but with that said, it's seeing no other with that said, seeing no other commissioner coming forward and I, but most importantly, based on my feeling of satisfaction with the applicant having satisfied what the annual review, I will make a motion to approve per the staff report.
Thank you, do we have a second, Commissioner Dicardi?
Yes, second.
Okay, I'll call the roll, for the record, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Dicardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, so the the findings that the staff recommended are approved, the vote of six to zero with one absent. With that, I will close the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We have a study session next, and I understand that Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Kennedy are both recused from the study session. And also I understand that Commissioner Kennedy has to leave the meeting early tonight. So I'm not sure if we will finish the you know, the study session before your availability ends. Can't make any promises on that, Commissioner Kennedy.
Oh, this, but the study session is the final, the final item on the agenda.
That's true, it's only informational items after that.
Right, correct.
I think we expect to not see you further tonight, Commissioner Harris?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to put it into record, it is my understanding now is my residence falls within five hundred feet of the very edge of the specific plan as the crow flies. So the city attorney and staff are researching how to handle this in the future, but because that research has not been completed, I need to recuse myself for this portion of the meeting until we have a better understanding of how I may participate in future discussions regarding this specific plan, I just wanted to state that in record.
Thank you for the clarification on that, Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that, I was going to ask, what is the basis for the recusal of the two commissioners?
I believe it's physical proximity to the project.
To, to thirteen hundred El Camino? This is?
No. To the specific plan.
Oh, so.
Boundaries, the edges.
Yeah.
So the, the moment, the city's taking the position that if you're within five hundred feet of anywhere in the specific plan, that you're accused of voting on anything in the specific plan, is that the current position?
Yeah, that was the email that we received.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Commissioner? Ms. Sandmeyer, would you like to comment on that?
So the proposed sign amendment would cover the entire specific plan area, even though the owners of thirteen hundred El Camino Real are the applicant, so because it covers the entire area, it's different than the DA review that only covered that thirteen hundred El Camino Real property.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So the study session tonight is on the applica, application by Cyrus Sanandaji at thirteen hundred El Camino Real, is a study session on a request for a zoning text amendment to modify municipal code chapter sixteen point nine two, signs, outdoor advertising with regard to a previously approved architectural control, low market rate housing agreement, environmental review and use permit for new mixed-use office, residential and retail development on a six point four acre site in the SPEC RD El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan zoning district. And we do have a staff report on this tonight, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who the author of that report is. Is that also Ms. Sandmeyer?
Yes, yes.
Do you have any clarifications or any additions to the staff report at this time?
Um, one update, we received an email from Michael Birch and that was sent to the planning commission. That email was in support of the amendment, the proposed amendment and describes in detail how it would affect the middle plaza at five hundred El Camino Real project.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from Ms. Sandmeyer? Okay, I guess I should just note for the record, it's Okay, I guess I should just note for the record, since we have lost two commissioners, that we still do have a quorum of the commission with Commissioner Barnes, DeCarty, Riggs and myself. So with that, do we have a further presentation from the applicant regarding the study section? Mr. Saninaji, you speak to the signage?
Yes, and thank you again for the opportunity. Just wanna make sure that I have perfect. I apologize, my screen is stuck. I'll keep this brief. Sorry, Commissioner Barnes?
I was just gonna ask Commissioner Dorn if a clarifying question about, not necessarily the presentation, but about the, the process for getting to this particular study session would be permissible?
Yes, I think so.
So I'm trying to contextualize what it is we'll be diving into here. And in looking at the staff report, the staff report recommends that we study the issue. So how did this, and this is, I guess, through the chair of the staff, how did this get in front of us? Is it? Is the genesis of the study session where a particular applicant who's, who has a project within the, the boundaries of Menlo Park sees something that they believe could be beneficial for not only their project and, and I guess for the zoning area writ large, and they take this idea to staff and staff says, it's a good idea, it's a bad idea. What was the, how did it get to us? And is there an underlying premise that staff believes that this is a proposal that has merit? And it's a function of hearing it through the planning commissioners to vet it, I guess is my question. How did this get in front of us? And what's the, what's the procedure for this being something that we should be looking at this evening? And that's through the chair of staff, so just give me some confidence.
Ms. Sandmeyer, would you care to respond?
Yes, so this has been identified as an issue for several years that the larger properties along El Camino Real would be capped at a low amount of signage, 100 square feet per the first frontage and then 50 per secondary frontage. The plan originally was to include this in, along with specific plan updates that were delayed through staffing shortages and other priorities. So that was the original direction from city council. However, as I mentioned, there were delays and so the staff initiated updates have not occurred. And the applicant for the 1300 El Camino Real property applied to kind of speed up the process. This is a study session, so there's no formal staff recommendation. I would say staff is overall supportive of increasing the signage for these properties in, within the specific plan. We are seeking guidance from the commission and the report includes a couple of bullet points with questions and things that we'd like feedback on. I hope that helps.
It does. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Barnes, for raising the question about the history. Can you give any insight into the history of application of this? You know, prior to the more recent developments along El Camino and the downtown specific plan? So is this because we never had properties that had longer than 100 foot frontage? And if we've had properties, commercial properties with longer than 100 foot frontage, did they traditionally operate under this regulation or not?
I don't believe there were a lot of properties that were over 100 feet of frontage. A lot of the, for example, this, the Spring Line, 1300 El Camino Real and the Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real merged a number of parcels together. But the merging did not mean that the, the previous sign allowances were added together. So I think it is a product of the specific plan and parcels being merged.
Thank you. And just to clarify, specific plan ends before you get down to further north where we had the car dealerships historically, correct? Those begin outside of the specific plan?
No, I believe that's the Middle Plaza and 500 El Camino Real project. So that is part of the specific plan.
Okay, so that, those properties had to have more than 100 feet of frontage at that point, though, right?
Well, they were separate. I think there were four or more parcels, so they each have their own allowance. Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting. So I'm sorry, just to clarify, I could be a property owner of five contiguous parcels that have five different buildings on them and could put five different signs. Essentially, I could be an owner of these five different parcels and think about them as a unit myself, but I could then do these five signs. But once those are all put together, then I can do one sign essentially. Is that a way to think about that historically?
Yeah, basically. I mean, the, the signage could, the square footage of the sign could be split into smaller signs, but basically, it's not the ownership that matters. It's whether it's a legal parcel or not.
Yep, I got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate the background.
Thank you. If you don't have any further clarifying questions, let's go to Mr. Saninaji. Would you have a say in this?
Thank you again to staff for your staff report. By way of background, Spring Line was approved in 2017 and is now close to completion with two pending issues that are critical to the success of the project. We addressed some of the project modifications that are in process and, and that we hope to bring forward to the planning commission. And the second critical item is signage. We have approximately 200,000 feet of office space in two three-story buildings and approximately 25,000 square feet of community serving uses fronting both El Camino and Oak Grove. We are in the process of negotiating with several tenants and are excited about what they will bring to the future of Menlo Park and the project. As with any large new mixed-use project, the provision of adequate signage is really integral to the vibrancy and success of the project and the success of those businesses that will end up wanting to, to take occupancy here. To address the question earlier about the city's signage ordinance, it was last updated in 1992. And it's long been recognized that its current signage rules don't work for these larger projects like Spring Line and others in the specific plan area. In fact, that need was acknowledged back in 2017 when city council directed that provisions for the signage rule be pursued to, quote, "allow larger projects to receive larger signage allocations subject to discretionary review." When we took over the project in summer of 2020, we learned that no progress had been made about fixing the signage problem. So concurrent with the project modifications that, that I addressed earlier, we initiated discussions with staff and our team conducted an intensive study of what sort of signage would be needed to make the project work, given the varying uses that would ultimately end up occupying the, the physical buildings. We submitted the basic elements of our proposal, including an illustrative massing plan to staff in May and updated in August based on cities, the city's feedback. As staff indicated, we're not here tonight with an actual master of sign plan for the project, but only to address the first step, which is updating the ordinance to address three specific areas: signage for the primary frontage, signage for the secondary frontages, and additional signage for frontages with more upper floor uses. In general, the intent was to try and keep the city's general approach and formula intact, but removing the 100 square foot cap per lot that currently just addressed for the primary frontages. With that change, we would be allowed approximately 540 square feet of signage in aggregate that could get divided up amongst the various tenants on the ground floor retail plane, for example. And a, a large part of that total would actually be used for just the project identification signage itself and, and wayfinding. The archway that you may have driven by that is currently blank between the two buildings on El Camino itself would require about 180 to 200 square feet just to hold the, the word Spring Line and provide for identity to the actual project itself. We're also proposing to remove the current effective cap of 50 square feet on the secondary frontages and instead allow signage on Oak Grove and Garwood at about half the amount that would be permitted on the El Camino frontage. Again, following the ratios that are in place, but removing that cap. This is particularly critical to provide the necessary signage for our community serving uses on Oak Grove and to allow those retailers to actually succeed. Candidly, that's just a precondition for, for the retailers to even sign leases with us at this point, because no retail concept would, would survive without any identity at all. And finally, we, we included a concept that would allow some additional signage for upper floor office uses along the primary El Camino frontage only, specifically for a story above the first story. We're asking for additional signage area equal to half of the area permitted based on the frontage length. And this approach is consistent with the logic of the city's current signage limitations while providing some additional signage based on the size of the buildings. Procedurally, anyone wishing to utilize these additional signage rights, including us, would submit a master signage plan for review by the planning commission. And this will assure that any expanded signage will meet the overall design and aesthetic goals of the specific plan. For our proposal, we have submitted an illustrative massing plan that shows conceptually the overall signage our proposal would allow for each frontage. It's not intended to show the exact locations and size of individual signs, but to give a general impression of the amount of signage area our proposal would allow. On our conceptual illustration, illustration, the maximum area shown is about 50 square feet for individual office tenant signage and around 25 square feet or less for individual retail tenant. We believe these are generally the appropriate sizes and we've received positive feedback from our prospective tenants that these sizes generally work. We greatly appreciate your support for the proposal as we're now at a point where construction is largely complete and signage is now one of two critical path issues for us to successfully complete and tenant this building, this project. It's incredibly sensitive for us, given how tenuous the situation is economically in the market given everything that's going on with COVID. And as you can imagine, negotiating with retailers at the moment is, is not the easiest of tasks. And our goal certainly is to have an activated destination here that will serve as a amenity to the overall community as opposed to a dormant, dark, potentially blighted project. If the changes aren't made soon, it will certainly have impact on the viability of our retail spaces, which in and of themselves are a condition of approval to, to try and achieve and satisfy this percentage threshold of, of sales revenue in the community serving uses as well. We're looking forward to your input tonight and working with you and city staff to moving the signage proposal forward on an expedited basis. And your positive feedback tonight would be vital to sustaining our efforts to bring in attractive community serving uses to the project.
Thank you. Before I ask for public comments, do we have any clarifying questions for Mr. Saninaji? And please, commissioners, use the button to digitally raise your hand, since I can't see all the commissioners right now. Okay, I'm not seeing any commissioner clarifying questions. So, Mr. Pruder, I would like to open it up to public comment this time.
Chair Dorn, once again, for public comment, if you'd like to provide public comment, who's in the public, are welcome to press the hand icon to raise your hand. And also, if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. I'm not seeing any at this time. And as a reminder, for anyone who is on the same line on Zoom or by phone with another associate who'd like to speak on the same line, to please indicate so when they're beginning their public comment to ensure that both commenters are able to provide their public comment. I'm happy to wait a moment before you close a public comment. Chair Dorn, I still don't see any hands.
Yeah, let's do it then. So still no hands, Mr. Pruder?
Still no hands, so if you'd like, you can proceed by closing public comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna close public comment at this time and then bring it back to the commission. I actually would like to ask a question. And I'm not sure if this is best addressed to Ms. Sandmeyer or Mr. Saninaji. But as I understand, the proposed ordinance on signs would have, I guess I have two questions. One, there would be no upper limit on the size of the sign at all. So it's an aggregate limit for the parcel on the amount of signs you had. But there seems to be nothing to prevent a developer from using all of that aggregate in one enormous sign. So I guess that's the first question for Ms. Sandmeyer. Is there any upper cap on the size of a sign that a very large parcel could have under this proposed ordinance?
So there's not in the specific text that applicants using this new provision would be required to get a master sign plan approval from the planning commission so that then the planning commission could comment that the sign is too big and condition the project or continue the, continue the item.
Okay, and then just to, you know, help me with the math. For, say, a parcel with 100 foot frontage on El Camino, it now is subject to 100 square foot limit. What would be the result of this formula for that parcel? Would it also be 100 square feet? Or would it actually allow even more signage for even a standard parcel or parcel with 100 feet or less of frontage?
Well, so right now, the, the lot frontage, if you, if you have 80 square feet or 80 feet of frontage, then you get 100 square feet of signage and that's calculated. It's mainly based on that figure one chart, but it is calculated with that complicated formula. That's included in the, in the proposed text. And so according to that formula, you would get slightly more for 100 foot lot, you would get slightly more than 100 square feet if it is with, along El Camino Real as a primary frontage.
Right. It looks like from that chart, then you would get to 100 square feet at about 70, between 70 and 75 feet of frontage on El Camino. Is that right?
That's right.
And then this chart doesn't sort of continue, but that line would continue out really at infinite, right? If you have more frontage, it just keeps going up.
Correct.
Thank you. Do we have other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner DeCarty?
Let us know what, if I drive further north on El Camino into Atherton, what's their regulation? And further south into Palo Alto, what's their regulation along El Camino?
Yes, staff would have to research that. I don't have that available now.
Other commissioners wishing to speak? I don't see any other commissioner, Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, thank you. I will say I've given this some thought.
I will say I've given this some thought. And I will confess that I didn't give it a whole lot of thought twelve, thirteen years ago. I was on the commission at the time of the downtown specific plan. In fact, through the entire process from visioning through the completion of the plan over a course of about five years. And then actually later in defending the plan with against a valid measure. However, since we didn't go into extensive discussions about signage at that time. I did in preparing for this meeting, reach out to Thomas Rogers, who was the planner assigned to the specific plan. And I have to say at that time, the specific, as a result of his effort, the specific plan very much reflects his extended and most unusual effort for which he actually got a Golden Acorn Award, I believe in twenty eleven or so. And we just had a brief discussion, but as Ms. Sandmeyer relayed. No actual modification of significance was made and the square footage allowed per lineal frontage simply was capped in an aggregate. Part of the reason, I think, is that when you start to think about signage and the effect that it can have on the streetscape. It's not a simple and linear progression. When you have a majority of buildings that are, say, two-story on that side of El Camino with a few one-story and then you introduce three and four-story buildings. And you introduce a different level of density. You potentially have a different level of signage. And there are several reference points. I regret that we do not have an answer for Commissioner DeCarty, whose question was quite logical and relevant. What do our neighboring cities do since those two cities are actually more Redwood City and Palo Alto have dealt with larger buildings and keeping the signage in scale? I do know personally that I don't want El Camino to come across as either a shopping mall or a cluster of big box stores. And we have references for those. If you're on El Camino, looking at Hillsdale Shopping Center. There's been a great deal of restraint, but certainly the signage is effective. If you go down one oh one past Mountain View and look at the series of, I think it's three big box stores, including Best Buy, REI. And I don't remember the other one or two. They are large-scale blocks with different colors and very bold signs that reflect the retailer. But in effect, they are at least visually like one-story buildings. What we have is quite a different level. And I appreciate staff and the applicant offering up the street elevations with the colored key zones where there might be signage. So I would like to say first off that I completely support expansion of retail signage. Retail signage on the retail floor, which typically the ground floor needs to address each and every retail outlet. It's only logical. It serves the retailer. It serves the public. And a whole series of signs when there's a whole series of stores makes sense. I take a different view of the overall building signage, which typically is at the top of the building along the parapet between the highest windows and the and the parapet. And is adjacent to a freeway used to communicate over hundreds of feet. In the case of El Camino, we don't have the hundreds of feet because we have the other side of El Camino or a forest of Atherton trees on the other side. So but I think we need to look a little more carefully about the upper signage. And assure that there is a level of restraint. If, for example, it ends up that the office building at over two hundred thousand square feet is rented to fifteen different tenants. You can imagine what it would look like if we have fifteen different signs running along the parapet. And that's why there's always a priority in office buildings. You have to step forward. Can't resist drawing the conclusion to a school building. You know, if it's the Haas Business Center, it's not the Haas, Jones, Friedman Business Center. Somebody pays up big and somebody gets his name on the building and it's worth it. And it's quite possible a building with this much frontage might have two names. But of course, we wouldn't want fifteen and I don't know that we would want four. The other thing is that it would be very tempting to have large-scale signage at the upper floor. Whereas I don't think that would be an aesthetic addition to our town. I think that character size, character meaning letter or number as well as color, Menlo Park has always had bright color restrictions, but I think we would want to reinforce that those upper signs would show some restraint. So I think as staff has brought this forward. Such items would be deferred to each and every review at planning commission level. And I have a concern for this because planning commissions change. Ten years ago, we had a number of people involved within attuned with aesthetics. I don't think we, looking forward, want to assume that the planning commissions of the future will always be attuned to aesthetics. I mean, we don't even want to assume that the seven of us on the current commission are all necessarily attuned to aesthetics. I think having some guidelines in place would benefit the community, would certainly make our job more reasonable and structured. And it would make the ongoing issue of signage. I mean, the first time that a building is signed is not the last time. Make that more predictable for the applicants. So I would encourage that we have guidelines that are a little bit more specific, particularly for the upper stories. And that staff take a look at Redwood City and Palo Alto signage. In the meantime, I think the, those of us present and maybe all seven can just keep our eyes out as we drive up and down El Camino over the next several weeks. And get a sense for what what seems to look right in terms of, well, the balance between being able to identify a building and a major tenant. And not having an overwhelming presence of signage in a residential, largely residential community. So I would like to seek the opinion of my fellow commissioners on what we might do tonight. Because I'm quite sensitive to the fact that the retail, in other words, predominantly first floor, and I think to a small degree, second floor in the case of this project spaces. Need to have some flexibility and expectations about signage. So would it be appropriate tonight, for example, to follow the initial proposal here from staff with their guidance from the applicant regarding the retail level and then ask for further study regarding overall building signage? So I'd be interested in the opinions of others.
Thank you. I would actually like to comment on that. I agree with your concerns. I think that having fifteen signs for different office tenants on top of an office building is not a look we want. I think I'm more worried about turning El Camino into something that looks like Times Square. We have a four-story building with a lot of frontage and there's no limit on, there's no upper limit on the signs permitted. I'm not comfortable with that. So in the staff report, they ask, there's three bullets that they had specific, staff had specific questions about. One is, are proposed formulas for calculating signs generally supported? I'm not supportive of a formula that doesn't have cap. I understand that the idea is that the master plan would have to come before the planning commission in each case. But I think that we need more guidance in the ordinance itself and should not leave this up to future planning commissions on ad hoc basis. Does the additional signage permitted for multi-story buildings seem reasonable? I think it is reasonable to have additional signage. Certainly, these large parcels were not contemplated at the time. Certainly in nineteen ninety-two and I think probably as Henry says, probably not really planned for in the general plan in twenty seventeen. So I think it is absolutely reasonable to have additional signage on these very large parcels beyond the hundred square foot limit. I think that I'd like to see more guidance in the ordinance than seems to be there now in the staff board. Regarding how the aggregate square footage would be parceled out. So as Henry mentioned, if you have a row of retail uses along El Camino, it makes sense that every store wants and needs a sign. But I'm worried about permitting, you know, an aggregate and then a larger aggregate limit on signs than having all that used on one, you know, very large you know, billboard. Rooftop would be the worst, but really any place on the building, it's a multi-story building. And the final bullet that the staff asked for guidance on, should the master sign plan be required for projects that fall under the zoning ordinance text? Yes, I think there should be a master plan for development like this. You have to think about how the pieces fit together. And I think Henry articulated the concerns about that very well. So I'm personally very supportive of a master sign plan for projects. Do we have other commissioners that would like to comment? Commissioner DeCarty.
I see the applicant's got his hand up. I defer to the chair or
Mr. Sanodji, speak.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to respond to a comment you made during, which was that with respect to a master sign plan and to address Commissioner Riggs' concerns. If both the limits on whether it's a per project or at the ordinance level, if there were limits placed on the total square footage on a per individual sign basis. And that included then dimensions, color, texture, and so on. Is the thought then that for each new tenant, we would need to go through an application to show conformance of the master plan or would planning staff be allowed to then determine that, yes, this fits the guidelines of the of the master signage plan that's been approved by the planning commission and therefore this is approved to move forward. I'm trying to just be cognizant of, while I don't anticipate fifteen tenants, you know, coming forth to the planning commission, but you know, certainly upwards of ten retail tenants, for example, and then the you know, several that would receive the you know, office-related signs. I was just curious how that how you were contemplating that to work, but we're fully in support of developing clear parameters that we would then adhere to.
Thank you. I just want to clarify from Mr. Sanodji, the the symbol for raising your hand is yellow and your background is pretty similar, so I couldn't see your hand raised there. And thank you to Commissioner DeCarty for pointing that out. Commissioner Riggs. Okay, you took your hand down. I think that the question that Mr. Sanodji posed, I would like to ask Ms. Sandmeyer to respond to. I'm sorry, Commissioner Riggs, you're raising your hand again. You're on mute. You're on mute. I see your lips moving.
I misled you perhaps. I wanted to make a comment, but following your guide guidance, I wanted to make sure my hand was lowered as soon as I started speaking.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sandmeyer, could you respond to the question of if there were a master sign plan for a project and over time the tenants change? Would each change in signage have to come back to the planning commission or do we have a master sign plan that would lay out guidelines so that, you know, the individual signs could change over time, but they wouldn't have to come back to planning commission?
I think a master sign plan could lay out guidelines like that. But that being said, this would be a new process, so the you know, commissioner should feel free to comment on what their preference would be. Maybe for larger changes, it would come back to the commission and maybe for smaller staff would evaluate the signs per the guidance of the master sign plan that was approved.
Thank you.
Yes, so what we've done in the past, and I mean, going back fifteen years or more. Is that signage following some basic guidelines was approved at the staff level. If it was in a gray area, we would get a memo from Mary Jane that would say it's been applied to change the sign from this kind of sign to that kind of sign. But it's still in the same square footage and it still does not include red or orange. And then the third level would be there's been an application to have a larger sign that includes a bright color parenthesis red and therefore planning commission needs to comment. So I think we already had that kind of format in place and and so that was what I was envisioning would happen once we had some general guidelines.
Thank you. Yeah, we get those kind of memos about substantial conformance you know, from the staff on a regular basis with other questions. So it makes sense that you could apply the same process to a signed master plan for a project. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, thank you. This has been a helpful conversation all the way around. If I may, just a clarifying question back to your staff. Can you give a sense of where did you get the inputs for the staff report? So this is essentially, I just, just that, where, you know, we have the staff report with this sort of recommendation and a way to think about this. What resources were consulted and collected to inform that staff report?
So the actual text amendments came from the applicant? I don't know if that that kind of answers your question. I think.
And they're just, yeah, so the sole source was essentially the applicant. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, it's the applicant's proposal.
And then can I ask, what happens after this study session? What are the next steps?
I think the next steps would be for the applicant to revise the proposal based on feedback. And then I believe it would come back to planning commission and then to city council for the final approval. And then I believe it would come back to planning commission and then, um, to city council for the final approval.
So there's no uh, other outreach to the community to get community input or engagement other than just the regular noticing of the planning commission meeting in that instance. Is that correct?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Um, so I just, some general reflections. First of all, I really appreciated Commissioner Riggs. Thank you for your comments or reflections this evening. Um, I find myself, um, uh, if we're sort of putting input into this process in, in general agreement with, uh, with what Commissioner Riggs said. Um, the distinguishing between the, um, sort of uh, retail level or ground level versus the, um, upper floors. Um, the point that yes, of course, a store needs to be able to have a sign. And, um, the point that, you, you know, this, this all needs to be, um, in keeping with, uh, you know, a community that is you know, this isn't a freeway with, uh, with the need to be able to see things from miles away. I also appreciate Chair Doran's comments about the overall limits on the size of the sign. Um, and that we've got some history here of not having, you know, flashing signs and garish colors and those sorts of pieces. All of that, I think, generally aligned. It makes sense to me. I also think that, um, I agree with the conversation about having a master plan that is more specific, which some, has some, um, guidance that is fairly definitive and easy to follow. Um, so that in fact, um, things don't repeatedly have to come to planning commission. I, it's extraordinary delay for everybody and it takes time of staff and city resources to bring things to us. And so I think to the extent that we can give and the city council can give very clear and specific guidance, um, that that would be a good outcome, um, from this effort. Um, I do think it's, this is something that feels important to residents of a city. Um, and I, for one, think there should be a better, better way to get community engagement and feedback about how they feel about signage along uh, these corridors. Um, it's a big part of the look and feel of the community and um, I think getting more input from the community uh, would be beneficial. I also think it would be helpful to get input and understanding as, um, Commissioner Riggs, um, suggested. Uh, from neighboring communities, um, Atherton, Redwood City, um, Palo Alto, so that we can understand how, you know, this fits with our neighbors. So that gives us a chance to have some input in this mix. Um, and I can imagine that there are actually um, you, you know, other sets of resources that have best practice for communities as they make different considerations, which would be helpful for anybody in making a decision in this way. Um, I have, um, I, and I, I appreciate the applicant and the submission and the chance to be able to see what they would look like in one configuration. So I have nothing against that. I think that's fabulous. I just think we could get input from other sources and we'd end up with a better outcome in this mix. And then I suppose the only other thing I would say is that you know, one of the things about signage is what it's competing against. Uh, and, um, I have been in communities that have been very successful with retail with very restrictive signage ordinances. And because every store along that row has the same restrictions. And because everybody in the community is comfortable and familiar with understanding that, um, you actually don't need to get into this, um, race to have the larger sign to be able to, uh, draw the attention to over something that's next door or to catch somebody's eye. So it's not immediately apparent to me that in the same way that we're saying you don't need to have flashing Times Square kind of lights, or you need to have garish colors or other things to be able to draw attention. It's not immediately apparent to me why size is, um, crucial um, as an outcome as opposed to clarity so that somebody can identify and know what's there and then know whether they want to go in or not. Um, so that's my own. Um, I think going beyond what I've heard other commissioners say. Um, I would like to understand more as we consider size, exactly why um, a particular sized signs, uh, for retail in particular ways are crucial relative to smaller ones, um, is again, we would consider um, what the appropriate sort of master planning guidance would be going forward. So that would be some of my, my, uh, input and thoughts for this evening. And thank you, Chair Doran.
Sorry about that. Uh, I see, uh, Mr. Sandaji has his hand raised once again, so we'd like to hear what he's got to say.
I, I waved my hand to, to try to let you know that you're muted. Um, I did want to address uh, Commissioner DeCarty's comment about, uh, retail signage and it's, i- if I understood the, the question around its necessity for the viability of the business. Uh, and I think the challenge here is that we don't have a, a level playing field. That by virtue of the fact that these larger projects, and this isn't just about Spring Line, but even the Middlefield project and others, uh, by virtue of these projects being so large that we don't have any signage allocation. So it would be as if to say that any retailer that was to occupy these larger projects was to not have signage. However, the auto shop across the street has the entirety of that hundred square feet of signage for its one uh, outlet. And so we, there, there is some unfortunate sort of inconsistency um, that already exists and that's simply what we're trying to resolve. Uh, I do know that our signage consultant, RSM, and, uh, the signage consultant, uh, for the Middlefield project, project is actually, uh, on this call, uh, I believe, Mr. Birch. Um, have spent a considerable amount of time actually, uh, doing that very, um, study and evaluation of the signage within Menlo Park along El Camino, uh, and then also in the neighboring jurisdictions as well. And I'm not sure if, if now is the appropriate time to, to share that with you or not, but um, certainly to, to say that our proposal was informed by the, uh, signage that, that does exist and is afforded to uh, other projects that are, that are more consistent with the, the lot sizes or parcel sizes that, that have existed to date prior to um, these larger projects being built in the, in the downtown, uh, area.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you very much and appreciate that there are other signs that might be, you know, larger in different parts. I think um, and I, again, I have, uh, and, and nothing but appreciation for the information that we've received. Um, it's, I think for us to make a consideration as a planning commission is that there are other ways that you could, um, analyze um, our downtown by sort of different sense of values and metrics and different people might have different perspectives. And I think as a planning commission, uh, we owe it to hear from those perspectives from across the community, um, in addition to this one. And that's the only uh, point I was, I was making.
Thank you. Do you have any further, uh, comments from the commission? Commissioner Barnes.
Uh, I must say I'm quite sympathetic to the premise of leveling the playing field for existing conditions. Or in relationship to existing conditions and um, you know, this is so at some point we need to get in, if, if we're gonna have a reasoned discussion about what's fair, and I think that is the, for me, the operative idea here. You know, it would reasonably include unpacking, um, a discussion of existing conditions. What's out there? What do we have? And specifically to the El Camino, I don't include Santa Cruz Avenue as a like and similar. I would look at, I would want to unpack what's currently existing on El Camino. Uh, in and around the area, what, what that looks like, what square footage is, linear square feet in relation to space. Lord knows, you know, I, I don't know that. I'm afraid of what I asked for because, you know, uh, let me just say this, that this, this discussion deserves that. And if we're gonna really dive into this, that's where I would want to go to look at existing conditions and making sure that retailers in this development are not disadvantaged vis a vis what's currently existing along El Camino. So when that happens, um, you know, I leave that up to the, the chair, but that's certainly something that I would want to hear. And that would be my viewpoint for, for looking at this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs.
Um, thank you. I I'm hearing this, uh, input, uh, and, and this expanded level of thought. I think this is very helpful and I hope it's helpful to staff. Um, at the same time, I'm, um, concerned about how quickly we can expand the options for the, uh, retail tenants that, um, that Spring Line hopes to be signing at this time. I mean, um, the buildings are awfully close to ready. Oh, and I should disclose that I, I did, uh, meet with Mr. Sandaji, um, a week or so ago, um, to look through the existing situations. At, at that project. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we could move forward. Uh, I mean, this is a study session, but could we, um, encourage a more prompt resolution of the retail signage? If we think that potentially the overall building signage is going to take any kind of uh, either staff report, uh, of our adjacent cities or, uh, any other level of study, for example, what exists on our own El Camino at this time. Um, do other commissioners feel that we should, um, urge, urge a two-part response at this time to get, um, retail kicked off and through the chair, um, have, have staff thought this to the level of where they might want to make a comment on that as well?
Yeah, um, I would just, uh, like, before we hear from staff, I would like to say that I'm very cognizant of, uh, the developers need to rent this space. Uh, but I would like to ask Ms. Sandmeyer, um, is there a practical way to, uh, to do something for the retail signage? Uh, and leave the other questions to a future day because as I understand, even for the retail, it would require an amendment to, uh, the master plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, so to update the, um, retail signage would also be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Um, commissioners could tonight recommend to the applicant to bring forth a separate proposal that would just be for retail um, that we can review and either bring as another study session or as a hearing. I guess depending on how, how much feedback is provided tonight and what the commission prefers. Um, one thing I wanted to note in the discussion, um, so one part of this proposal is lifting a cap of a hundred square feet. And the second part is allowing additional, um, signage for multi-story buildings based on how many stories there are. So in that sense, it's, um, it wouldn't just level the playing field with other El Camino Real properties. And those additional square feet that are permitted, um, for the additional stories would only be along El Camino Real. And so that language is, um, in the proposed ordinance update. So it's, it's on the top of page three, um, in the staff report.
Um, I think I would, uh, like, oh, uh, Mr. Sandaji, did you have something that?
Uh, thank you, Chair Doran. Uh, I, I do have a question or, eh, as it relates to the discussion at hand, and, and I recognize that uh, the commission is looking for a very thoughtful response to the overall amendment and the implications this has to all the potential projects, uh, whether existing or, or uh, forthcoming in the future. Given the fact that the commission still retains complete discretionary control over all signage master plans that would fall under this. Would it be, uh, acceptable to the chair to proceed on the basis of, of removing the cap that is in place that creates that unlevelable playing field? Uh, but then retain complete control and allow time for this further discussion to occur. Um, we're, from our project's perspective, um, a little bit of the guinea pig and, and just wanted to sort of extricate ourselves from that discussion, uh, to the extent uh, the, the commission is amenable to that, uh, and instead come forth to you with a specific proposal that can address e- each of your, um, current, uh, concerns and happy to do so whether by separating the retail and, uh, project identity and wayfinding from the office, um, which we also believe is integral. Uh, if that's, um, uh, a, a way to, to allow the conversation to proceed. But certainly at, at the very least to allow for the removal of the cap such that we can proceed even if it is on the basis of the retail and, uh, project identity or wayfinding. Um, while we wait, uh, to allow resolution for the broader discussion, uh, of, um, uh, the sort of comprehensive policy that then the planning commission plans to implement. Um, as each master plan is, is presented, uh, for approval.
So, um, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners and I think uh, particularly Commissioner DeCarty and Commissioner Barnes, who looking for additional input before making a decision. Uh, and sort of gauge their reaction to that question. If we, uh, suggested in this study session, because we're not passing any resolutions tonight, but, uh, if we recommended to the staff that they bring forth an amendment, uh, that would only remove the cap on signage and require approval of a master plan uh, for signage. I guess we could further caveat that with, uh, master plan for retail only pending further action on a a more far-reaching amendment to zoning ordinance. Certainly, uh, not meaning to exclude Commissioner Riggs, but I think from the comments we heard previously, it seems that these concerns are maybe more acute for Commissioner DeCarty and Barnes, but I'd like to hear from everyone uh, on their comfort level with, uh, uh, recommendation like that.
So I'm happy to, to follow up with that. I understanding the practical implications of removing the cap, can someone talk to that?
So I guess that's a question for Ms. Sandmeyer. I mean, my fear is that if there's no cap, even though there's requirement that a master plan be approved by the planning commission. I, I just worry that there's too little control on that. I, I'd like to have clear rules and, um, it seems a little bit underdefined to me, but I would like to hear what Ms. Sandmeyer has to say on that.
Um, so certainly commissioners could recommend to the applicant that they revise their, uh, proposal to just remove the cap and it sounds like to not include additional signage allowance for multi-story buildings. And to either limited to retail or, or not limited to retail. And, um, a recommendation could also be made to the applicant to revise the proposal to maybe include a maximum sign size or, or something like that to address some of the concerns. Um, I, I think any kind of I I think any kind of limitations like that, whether it's based on colors or size, could be added to this zoning code amendment.
Thank you. Yeah, I I think that personally I would I would be comfortable with something like that. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yeah, I guess I mess up a little confused at this point. Because it sounds like we're taking this conversation and we're making specific to this project to help this project move through right now. But we've got two commissioners that have been recused because they live near the entire specific plan area and not this project. So if we are going to zero in and have a conversation about this project, then why don't we have our other commissioners involved in this conversation? And I suppose that's a question to staff. If we're making some move right now, it's certainly in spirit is around one specific project and not around the reason why two commissioners had to recuse themselves. And I don't understand how we're allowed to do that.
Ms. Sandmeyer, maybe you could respond. But my understanding is this was a recommendation from the city attorney. Is that correct?
Yes, but the city attorney advised us that commissioners within 500 or 1,000 feet should recuse themselves pending a little more research, but it's safer to make sure there's no Brown Act violation. And I think kind of the question about whether if this is only applying to 1,300 El Camino Real, I think staff definitely is supportive of having the amendment be for the whole specific plan area. The Middle Plaza 500 El Camino Real project isn't far behind in terms of leasing space. And I know you know, for for them, I I believe it's just as pressing of an issue and there's there may also be other parcels that will be facing similar a similar situation. So I think it definitely makes sense to have it applied to the whole specific plan area. And kind of the way it was written, parcels along El Camino Real with El Camino Real frontage. We allow more signage versus the streets within the specific plan.
So I I think Chair Dorn, you asked whether I'd be comfortable proceeding along some lines like this. This pacing issue. I can appreciate Mr. Sanandaji's dilemma and the need to be able to, from, you know, everything you're saying, to be able to make the project viable and to get it leased out and certainly understand that. At the same time, we're supposed to move tonight with four of us here while we have other commissioners who are waiting on further guidance from the city attorney about whether they're allowed to participate in this or not. So that hardly seems fair or right. If we've still pending some decision about exactly whether a commissioner can participate or not, and yet we're to expedite out of a study session, some informal guidance about how we're going to proceed in this. With background information on signage that was presented solely from the applicant and without any other wraparound information was something that we all as citizens of our community can imagine, our community would like to have some input into that unfortunately, I understand the pressures and the strain. The other piece about this and, you know, to Mr. Sanandaji, I I I mean, I don't know exactly why it's only at this point that we're having this conversation. I know that there's a sequence and a history on this from your perspective. But this is not an ordinance that was put in place recently in this mix. So to answer your question, Chair Dorn, for all of those reasons, I'm entirely uncomfortable moving along with that kind of recommendation this evening. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right from the input we've had. I don't think it's right because of how we've heard back from who can participate from the planning commission. And as a matter of public policy, I don't think that's the right way to proceed.
Thank you. I'd like to try to get an idea of what the alternative is here. So Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have an idea of how long would it take to get further guidance from the city attorney? That's one question. And the other question is, if we wanted to do another study session on this subject, hopefully with the participation of our other members, but also with some input about similar ordinances in neighboring cities. How long would it take to get another study session like that on the agenda?
I I believe the upcoming meetings are fairly full, so it would likely be in December. That's helpful. I did also receive a message from Mr. Pruder that we have one person who's raising their hand if and I understand public comment is over, but if it might, if it would help the commission to hear a comment, that's that's up to you, Chair Dorn.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious what past practice has been on this. I mean, once we close public comment, do we reopen? Is it is there precedent for reopening it? Or I don't want to sort of disadvantage other, you know, applicants that you know, my there might have been public comments didn't get heard because they weren't voiced during public comment period. So what's the past practice been on that?
I think there's certainly been situations where the chair reopened public comment and other many other cases. I think usually it's public comment is not reopened. And we brought it up in this case because it sounded like commissioners wanted to hear more from the public, but it's completely up to you.
That's a good point. Okay, I will reopen public comment. We have one here. Before I do that, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Riggs.
Oh, thank you. I I appreciate that. I I would like to chime in and say that there's a reason why we don't reopen public comment. There is, for example, a person in our community who for some years has shown up at the ending of hearings or at least the deep into the first half of hearings and made sure that that person was the last to submit a comment card or asked for a delayed opportunity partly in order to have the last word and in every case, in order to leverage a position to speak. And I think that that has been awkward and inappropriate. And at the risk of excluding some information that we would actually quite like to have tonight. I I think that we open ourselves up to allowing ourselves to our structure to be taken advantage of.
Thank you. I really appreciate your perspective on that because you've got a lot longer history with the planning commission than I do. So I think I'm going to take that advice actually and not reopen a public comment. We do have to, we have to have some ground rules and then these meetings will basically never never finish if we don't. So where does that leave us? I think we're unable to make a recommendation to, well, we have four people here. It is a quorum. It's a pretty slim quorum and we've had one commissioner express disapproval, but I suppose it's theoretically possible. We could have a majority of the quorum. If the other three commissioners wanted to make a recommendation. I'm not prepared to make a recommendation. So I I guess we can't have majority of the quorum. Commissioner Riggs.
An idea just occurred to me that what might help, at least to some degree, in the leasing effort of this property, if if not also for Middle Plaza, would be if the planning commission would make a formal motion of support for increasing the retail signage. And similar to removing the cap, but with some limitations regarding the size of individual signs and limitations on aggregating the square footage. Because ultimately, the purpose would be if if there are 12 storefronts to have 12 signs. Not that you can get 12 storefronts, then the guy with the bucks can have one really big sign and the other guys get what's left over. So perhaps we could express that support even with just four of us with those two potential limitations. And that might give the retail world the sense that we will, in our own way, get to a revision.
If I may comment through the chair quickly, since this is a study session, commissioners can provide individual feedback. There doesn't need to be a motion and a and a vote. So it's it's individual feedback. It doesn't have to be the whole commission.
Thank you for reminding us on that.
Yeah, I was suggesting something that might land a comfort level by implying that at least some commissioners were bent in that direction. If if that helps, I don't know.
Yeah. I think it's it's good suggestion. I I think that you know, there is no action before the commission tonight. So there's really nothing for us to vote on. And thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer, for reminding us of that. So what I'd like to do is just poll the members for their last comments. And then I'd like to conclude the study session. So before I do that, I'll give Mr. Sanandaji another opportunity.
Commissioners, thank you so much for the the ongoing debate here. As I mentioned, this is a very sensitive topic and we're very cognizant of that. I think part of the challenge that applies not just to us but to Middlefield and I believe that the member of the public that was trying to make comment was a a member of that project, the sign consultant and had missed his opportunity earlier. But in the absence or in the absence of a recommendation from you this evening, we wouldn't be able to move forward with any proposal to bring forth to the commission that would have otherwise addressed all of the concerns that you brought up, even if we were to do it in sort of segmented approach, right? That that if we were to come forward with a proposal that addressed at least our retail concerns without removing that cap, we don't even have a retail proposal that we can bring forth. So we end up in in a bit of purgatory, I think, at this point. And to answer, I think Commissioner DeCarty's question as to why it had taken as long as it has. Candidly, this was something that was meant to have been addressed in absence of any one specific project. It just so happened that it hasn't been addressed since 2017. And so we are now at the forefront of this. And as I mentioned, that this sort of guinea pig to a certain degree. So I think if if I was to make one final plea with the commission, it would be to allow for us to be able to present to you a proposal, which would only be able to happen if the the aggregate limit was removed. But you still retain 100% control discretionary control over each part of that application that we bring forward, both the the retail and the project sort of wayfinding and then separately at a later date, once the commission and staff are have reached a comfort level of a standard or recommendation that can we can adhere to for other upper level signage. Then we can come forth for that as well. And so that that really is my my request of you because in the absence of that, I think we we end up sort of on pause with no real path to to resolution.
Thank you. So my reaction, I I think really polling the individual members, getting an opportunity to express their views is probably the only feasible course here since we were not voting on anything. It's a study session. So I would be favorably inclined towards a proposal along lines that Commissioner Riggs suggested, which would remove the aggregate cap. And with respect to retail. And in my case, I think I would like it to be confined to ground level signage. And I would like to see if there was an amendment to the zoning ordinance that despite removing the aggregate cap of 100 square feet for a project that's on one parcel. I'd like to see provisions in there that that increased aggregate cap, which could be quite large, could not be used, you know, for one ginormous sign, could all be applied towards one sign. So I'd like to see language in the zoning amendment about how that would be distributed among different different storefronts or different parts of the parcel. That's my, that's my view. So we'd like to just, I think I'll just go alphabetically and ask people for final comments. I would like to try to wrap this up. Commissioner Barnes, could you just give any guidance you have for the staff?
Yes, thank you, Chair Dorn. I must say that I'm fundamentally perplexed with the notion of working through this in relation to one specific project. I I think I get how we got here and I think that from a practical standpoint, this project is looking for clarity and oftentimes it's a specific reason why things move forward. What I'm trying to balance is we're looking at a text amendment which will have, which will be applicable across the specific plan area, but yet we're we're working specifically from one project's viewpoint. So there's a I've just been trying to reconcile that as we've gone through this process. But as imperfect as that may be, I guess what I am so so that so that's big for me. But and, you know, and but however, what I do am sympathetic to is is the need to get the resolution now or get move in a direction that pushes the ball forward now. I don't I'm not super sensitive to this issue. I think there's reasonable best practices that are going to bound to this process and I don't think we're going to have a Vegas or Times Square effect. So I I feel comfortable with not having a super wide and deep community outreach. Not that it's an important issue, but I think that I think that the the planning commission is empowered to make this call and along with the the council, you know, when it comes time for a text amendment. I am also comfortable with you know, if we've got four, we've got four making this decision because the others are recused. If we've got, you know, six or seven, then that's, you know, whatever the number is. I don't see that as a barrier to making to going forward. So so with that said, I'm in favor of removing the aggregate cap. I do hear in, in, you know, respect, Chair Dorn, sensitivity to the billboard effect where you have you know, in effect, you get the billboard coming out of this. So I think we can bounder that fairly effectively. I think going for the ground floor retail, I'm looking at the elevations and, you know, the the ones that are highlighted in red are what you would specifically say ground floor retail. So that that works for me. So just to reiterate, I'm fine removing the cap for the purposes of of working on this. Having it be with respect to retail and making sure that there's an an upper limit so we don't get a billboard effect across this project. But I do, I I do want to express my uncomfortability of of working this issue from the vantage point. from the vantage point of this particular project because it's not a project specific. Because in one breath, we're saying, this is, this is a big issue. It's going to affect other projects, for instance, Middle Plaza. And then the other breath, we're saying, well, let's go from the, let's use the work product that was generated just for this particular project and base our decision making on that. And that's, and that leads me to believe that, you know, as we get down to the crafting a specific text amendment, I'd want to see additional viewpoints or work product from this. And I'm really not interested in what Redwood City does or Los Altos does, whatever. I think we have enough of a baseline here in the city to know what we want. And, and I think we can pull together some best practices for what's existing conditions here in Menlo Park. So I don't think it has to be super expansive and be at, you know, three or four city survey when it comes time to run the text amendment and look at, you know, what works or doesn't work. So that's my, my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty, would you like to provide some final guidance for the staff?
Yeah, I mean, I gave my, my input earlier on. I thought building on Commissioner Riggs, Chair Doran, your comments and stand by all of those. I certainly understand the need for retail to be able to sign. And, and in, you know, this instance, they wouldn't be able to do that. So something needs to change. I appreciate the applicant, you know, being in a tough position. Looks like from a public policy perspective, this should have been looked at in 2017 or 2018 and you would have had plenty of time in that. That's not where we are right now. But as a planning commissioner, where we are right now is being jammed on something where we simply do not have good information and we don't have balanced information. And that's not an okay way to proceed. We don't even have clarity about whether a couple of our planning commissioners are allowed to participate. That's fundamentally wrong. And so I cannot go forward with that kind of thing. So now to staff, we're looking to the longer term. The one thing I would say to the applicant is, you know, if staff can get this back on for a study session in December, you know, you have an incentive and I could imagine, and I don't know the cost or expense, but I actually think it would be simpler to go poll what the regs are, one town north and two towns north and one town south. I, as opposed to trying to come up with anything else, that gives us something to look at. I think there's a way to do some community outreach to see, you know, what residents nearby would look like and to be able to do that. There are many things that come before us as a planning commission where you have expectation that applicants would do that. And, you know, before we would have permitted the construction originally of your project, would have asked for that around the neighborhood or from community outreach. So we have precedent of asking applicants to do all those things. I'm not saying you should, but I would say that for me, absent having the opportunity to see that kind of information, it makes it much harder to go forward. And the piece that I would concur with Commissioner Barnes is the confusion about on a single project versus for all projects in this area. And again, I think we keep on sort of drifting back and forth on, on this. And so the next time I see this, you know, would want to have greater clarity about exactly what we would be putting in place. So thank you, Chair Doran, for guiding us through this this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, have you got any final thoughts for us?
I don't, I don't think so. I'm listening to my fellow commissioners and the other concerns there are besides the one brought forward to us about being able to nail down signage options and leases. I do think that among us, we have suggested that the applicant come forward with a different proposal. And I'm hearing, at least from this reduced group, a general direction that the proposal would relieve the cap on retail, but provide some limits on an individual maximum sign. And frankly, I do not see a reason why that proposal could not be brought forward. And maybe I'm missing something. So I, I guess there's still work to be done.
Thank you. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have any questions for the commission? Can we wrap this up?
No, I think, I think we have sufficient guidance. Thank you.
Thank you. In that case, I will close the study session and we'll move to informational items. Ms. Sandmeyer, do you have some informational items for us?
Yes, so the next meeting will be November 1st. We, so that the Chrysler pump station, general plan amendment, a rezone that was continued tonight will be heard at that meeting. And also the 760 College Avenue project that was continued at the last November meeting will also be heard. And then I think we have two other small projects. So.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Barnes has his hand raised. You're on mute, Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. And since we've left the prior agenda item, I don't know that we can, I don't know that I need a response, but I am entirely unclear about the, what happens next as it relates to the study session we just had. So let me just ask that we request a report out from staff, be it at the next meeting, as to, based on everything they heard tonight, what happens next and how this looks and what the outcome is, just so we can close this loop on the study session. Because this is very unusual on that, as I said before, we're essentially litigating a text amendment on behalf of a, of a specific project. And I just want to understand how this thing loops together procedurally. So if we could get that for the next meeting, assuming that some thoughts have been given to it between now and next meeting, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a hand raised from Commissioner DeCarty as well.
If I could just add on to Commissioner Barnes, if we could also understand the resolution of the recusals of the other commissioners and whether those stand and why those stand in that context would be very helpful.
Thank you. Okay. I think that concludes it for tonight. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Chair Doran. Appreciate your guidance on this. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.